To folks who would like to make presentations this evening to the council. So I'm going to call on two of our guests first, Melissa Hughes, Commissioner Melissa Hughes, one of our Tifton County Commissioners, and the third Vice President of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. So Commissioner Hughes, it's nice to have you here with us tonight. And Dr. Homer Day. So Melissa and Dr. Day, if y'all would like to come and share with us the information that you'd like to present, and we'll be glad to hear what you've got for us.
First of all, let me say hello to all of you that I've seen since a few months ago. The road was weird and dark and deep. I have promises to keep and miles ago before I see you. Having used that when I first, I want you to know that Ms. Hughes and myself, I'm getting on an age where she's getting younger. And so to try to reach a mid-point in there, we decided we'd better get somebody to help us do these things. And so in doing that tonight, we're just honored to have you, to have us come and make a presentation to you, to let you know that from the historical context, we want to be a part of what's going on. And to be a part of what's going on, you have to do it in a manner that it should be done.
Right.
And so it's incumbent upon us then to look out for the future. And in looking out for the future, we're asking Ambrose King to be our spokesperson tonight. Now, for those of you who don't know Ambrose, know that you'll do this with your fingers crossed, but he has promised us that he's going to stay on target tonight. And so at this time, we're going to ask him to give a few opening words as far as why we are here, and then he's going to follow it up with the resolution.
Okay.
Mayor, Council. The Historic, Historical Preservation Alliance Resolution. Whereas within the providence of Moses and Joshua land was received from God Almighty to give to his people to use, protect, and keep from following generations. And whereas the alliance consisting of concerned citizens and other parties of interest feel it befitting to act without delay in sounding the alarm that the need for preserving the results of our forefathers' hard days of labor, building a distinct culture, purchasing holding land, and other real properties for their children and future generations be cherished. And whereas this alliance adopted a mission to save and preserve the heritage of South Tifton inclusive of an area as outlined in the South Tifton Redevelopment Plan Commission by this council. It is our hope that this area will become the third historic district within the city. We desire to creatively enrich the lives of every person, every street, and every structure through exceptional inviting spaces and community connection. And whereas this alliance adopted a purpose to develop and articulate an outlet that promotes a sustainable historic preservation and fosters community improvements and advocacy to ensure the protection and advancement of the heritage and social transformation of the community. And whereas we acknowledge that our charge is to be good, faithful, and diligent stewards of our inheritance. In the words of one of Tifton's greatest sons, "Some of us need to be at the table." And whereas, be therefore it resolved that this city council requests its Historical Preservation Commission surveys and studies to determine the feasibility of a third historic district. If a third historic district is feasible, we request that it be established as the South Tifton Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any comments, questions? We have discussion? Bruce?
Please.
Yes, Bruce Green.
I'm just going to step up.
Sure.
You all have in your folder a three-page document. When we did this work over the last two years, and we would use the phrase "South Tifton", the geography was a little confusing. But for clarity, and we need to say this, when we speak, Phillipsburg and Unionville, we all county. If you go past Seventeenth Street, we found historic documentation on the Sanborn maps of the early 1912s and 20s that they indicate that Phillipsburg exists one mile due southwest of the steps of the post office, which happens to be our library now. So back then, a lot of people think Phillipsburg comes up north of Matt Wilson, but it really didn't. It went south of there.
Okay.
What we call South Tifton is Ninth, Eleventh, Thirteenth, Fifteenth, and Seventeenth Street. And that's that area that you'll see. And wherever Jonathan is, or there's a slide he's going to bring up real quick, so the audience and you can see it on your laptops. In 2018, when we set about to do the South Tifton Redevelopment Study, there was a lot of discussion about where the boundaries would be. Well, it ends up that pretty much inside those boundaries, as Ambrose referred to, that is the potential area for a historic district.
Right.
There it comes, yeah. So that area that you see, which is pretty much south of Horizon Mill going down to Matt Wilson, across Seventeenth Street. And again, for clarity, I want to add this. If we're speaking of the city of Tifton, if we're going to ask, if you are, we're going to ask the Preservation Commission, you go across Main Street because Pine, Beach, Alder, and Elm are also a potential historic district.
Right, okay.
So we need to understand that whatever you charge the Preservation Commission with, it is an area larger than this South Tifton study area.
Right, okay.
Simply because of what it is.
That's right.
And it's all within the corporate limits.
Okay.
If you go south of Alder, Elder, that's easy to say, Alder, Elm, Beach, and what was the other one? Those streets, that begins to be Unionville.
Okay.
And that's in the county. It's south of the city limits.
Right.
So, and I know Ms. Hughes is here from the county, and we've been talking that there is a proposal coming before the county government, that's why you have it drafted out on there, that will ask the county government to create its own Historic Preservation Commission, just like this government did thirty-some-odd years ago.
Okay.
Thirty-one years ago.
Sure.
So any other quick questions that if you have?
This, to me, is very exciting. It works perfectly seamlessly, hand in hand, with the urban redevelopment organization's challenge that we have given them with the basis of creating the urban redevelopment area and defining that. So I am very excited to see this proposal and hope that this council will join me in supporting this enthusiastically. So that being said...
Is this whole area inside the city right here? This whole area inside the city we're talking about?
Correct, yes. All but Matt Wilson. That was drawn into the study area just because of the Matt Wilson influence from the Board of Education. But when you draw the city limit, the corporate line across, that's the area north of there that we're talking about and south of downtown, south of Ninth Street. Ninth Street north is not only in the local historic district, it's in the National Register Historic District as well, in the downtown commercial district.
Right.
But nothing south of Ninth is included in any kind of district. And I remember one of you in particular, your eyes the night that I presented the tax base study, if you go North Park Avenue and go to South Park Avenue, there's a $2 million difference in property values. And I absolutely believe it has to do with whether or not that was designated a historic district, because we didn't encourage that investment.
Right.
And there were reasons back then that that was done.
Well, timing is everything.
Yes, thirty-something years ago, yeah.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
I can't think of any, are there any downsides?
We talked about that with the citizens, that if you do it, that they don't have to, but they can ask for the Preservation Commission to review all building permits so that they get quality construction and quality. And if you go back to our South Tifton Community Input Meetings, that was one of the things the citizens said. We want code enforcement, we want quality buildings, we want to remove some of the blight, if you will. So that was brought up a year and a half ago and carried through all the meetings and was written into that plan. Does that answer your question? I will add this too, real quick. The first step, when the city chooses to charge its Preservation Commission to look at this district, the sister that follows is the National Register Historic District.
Right.
And when you bring in the National Register Historic District, that's where the economic incentives lie. And the mayor knows that because she was a former Main Street manager. But that's where the 20% and the 25% federal and state investment credits come from. That doesn't cost the city of Tifton anything. That's just what the property owners can take advantage of, both residential and commercial. And it's just a natural progression. It's what we did in downtown. The downtown was listed on the National Register in 1983. The city commission, because I was here, approved the local historic district in 1988. So five years later it came. With this one, it'll probably be the reverse. The local district comes first and then the National Register District. But again, if you're talking about urban development, and that's what y'all hired me to help with, these are tools that we need to help the property owners get some return on their investment.
So we're talking about a separate historic district, not connected to the current one, right?
Well, it's interesting. That would be upon the research and determination of the Tifton Preservation Commission. In many cities like Noonan, they have five districts. They all come under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Noonan, but they are distinct districts. Just as you heard in the presentation, there is not only a geographic, but there's a cultural and historical difference. And so that's probably, if we did it as a National Register nomination, that's exactly what we would write into it. All the benefits are there. It's just that it has a reason for having been built and eloquently said by this group.
Right, exactly. Well, I'm very excited. Like I said, I think it just is a, it's hand in glove with regard to the urban redevelopment program and what's going on. So I would hope that this council would support that, because preservation is economic development. And we've seen that with our downtown. We've seen that with the residential historic district that is in place now, where Frank and I have the privilege of living and love that. And this is just another layer of taking care of our citizens and preserving our past and making sure that that's there like the proclamation read for future generations. So I'm very excited.
Good, just Mayor, Council, and Bruce, just for clarification, because there was some confusion about the boundaries. So I just want to make sure that on the second page, so this is the city of Tifton tucked into our, what we're doing with South Tifton Redevelopment. I think Commissioner Hughes is also proposing legislation for historical district in Phillipsburg and Unionville. Commissioner, is that correct? Okay, so there was some confusion about boundaries, so now I understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. So that makes sense.
Can we have a workshop, Bruce? No, we don't market a little more. Um, now, let me ask you this, because you know, our Preservation Commission has guidelines that we have and have been set for a long time. If the city of Tifton, if our Preservation Commission were to, I guess, conclude this as a traditional district, you would fall under those same guidelines?
That's a good question. My first answer to you would be probably not, although there's a great deal of similarity because in that report, in that study, there are photographic images that the houses are almost identical on North Park and on South Park. But that doesn't mean they are in the whole district. So I would say that would be a continuance of a part of the Preservation Commission's study. Will our current city of Tifton's historic district guidelines also work in South Tifton? And the answer is potentially. But it would certainly be worth review and comment.
I would not say that they would have to.
Correct, yeah.
Each area tends to be different.
It's distinct, that's right. Just like downtown is distinct from Twelfth Street.
Yes.
Right.
Let me ask you a question. I guess the part, now, I'm not for it, I'm not saying that I'm...
No, ask questions, that's good.
What I'm telling you is, if it's any different, if you do one thing on this side and you set precedent over here that maybe on this one that wasn't allowed to do, like, you know, they put vinyl siding, I don't know, whatever, I can't, you know, the architectural...
The architectural components of renovation or something.
If one's different than the other or whatever, I mean, you know, I can see how it can convolute. I know that there's been several people who have tried to do things with the Historic Preservation Commission, and they've had some tough times getting things done or whatever through the guidelines. And, you know, so, not that I'm saying that I want them to have a tough time in this new district, but I don't want to be able to make both of them float easily together where they're not competing or anything, they're not, well, it's easier to do business with the South Historic Tifton guidelines than it are on the North Side Historic Guidelines.
And it's interesting, because I hear the ears of the citizens over here and I see community development back here. And whatever the guidelines are for the historic district, clearly they would have to be written to be compatible for South Tifton as well. And we could all be a part of that, because typically guidelines are developed through citizen input. But to answer your question, absolutely there ought to be consistency in those guidelines. And let me share this with you. Why is North Park Avenue $2 million in value higher than South Park? They've never had design guidelines. They've never had the investment that, I mean, you could argue the case on either point, but there is an economic difference. And it is those stringent guidelines that make our downtown tax base worth in excess of $56 million. And in 1988, when this historic district was first adopted, I can assure you, as a Main Street manager back then, the downtown tax base was not even close to $58 million.
I guess what I'm trying to say without sounding ridiculous or whatever it is, you have a lot of investors who are invested in South Tifton and they have a lot of rental property. If something were to come up and they have to change something, if they have to go through front of this Historic Preservation Commission, and it costs a lot of money to do that, that could be an effect on the amount of rent that they're going to charge their tenants. What I don't want to cause is somebody sitting there may be paying $375, $450 a month, because I mean, it is what it is, that's what they can pay. Now, because they have had to make these changes, now their rent's going from $575 to $650 a month, and they can't pay, and I don't want these folks to be like, they're being kicked out of their home, you know?
No, and I don't think that's where we're going with this. I mean...
I mean, I want to have quality, good, you know, I mean, what I'm saying is, I want them to have a great living. I want everybody to have a great house, but I don't want to, I just see where this could open up a Pandora's Box where it's going to have to, you're going to have a people that's going to have to move out of the place because the tenant or the owner of the property is going to charge more for the rent. If that makes any sense to you. Well, I know what you mean, because right now vinyl siding, you can't put it in the historic district unless it's pre-existing right now, but you can't put new vinyl siding in the historic district. It could be a difference, so...
Not to interrupt, having worked in historic preservation for about 35 years and having restored a house in Valdosta when I was 20-something years old, I can answer that question directly as a former investor. There is a time and a place when property values do go up. Not mileage rates, but property values. And in historic districts, that's what seems to bear the wave and the storm of a recession. In fact, there are studies that have been done that it's value-added. I hear clearly what you're asking and saying about, does it affect the builder? Yes, it could. Does it affect the eventual venture? Yes, it might. But it also affects the family that's selling Mama's House that's been on the corner for 50 years. And as the values float up, when they go to sell Mama's House, they get the top dollar they can get for it because of, and I'm going to use this phrase, the protective covenant that was put over that neighborhood to begin with. So there are several signs to your question. Brilliantly put, but it's the thing that, again, we go back to the baseline. You've got a Preservation Commission, you can charge them to look at that area, study it, and then also to develop the design guidelines specific for that area.
Yeah. I guess I'm just, the unintended consequences.
Well, those are all things we need to...
They are, they're wonderful questions, yeah. They're the reality of what this means. And we, just so you know, Mayor and Council, when this group met, I would ask them, I said, "Are you aware of what a historic district brings in Georgia?" It brings design review. Typically, you have a Preservation Commission that's established, and every time you get a building permit to do something to the exterior, not the interior, you go before basic design review. And some of you've probably even served on that. We have people out in the audience that've served on a Preservation Commission.
Yeah, that's the good side, because there are a lot of people going to be excited about it. But there's going to be those people that aren't excited, and they're going to take that position, "This is my property, I can do what I want to do with it." Well, guess what? No, you can't. So, you know, just those, and just have to deal with those on a one-off basis.
And with that said, let's do this. Code supersedes everything. So life safety codes.
I think I can see him over there now.
It's all Danny's fault. No, he didn't tell me that, but it does. I mean, life safety, you know, historic preservation is one thing, and life safety's another. So it's the blend of that, and that's what we have in Tifton. So again, just thank you for listening and thank you for your consideration, and I'll be available afterwards if you want to ask me some questions.
Okay. Are any other questions, gentlemen, before we move forward? Well, thank you for that presentation. Thank you for your interest, and we appreciate that. And that is a good discussion to have. Normally, in our workshops, we generally don't open the floor for public engagement. Usually, we reserve that to happen at our regular meetings. That is at the discretion of the council. I feel that there is, there are some folks who are with us tonight who would like to address the council, and I feel that their concerns are warranted, and I would like for this group to consider hearing those public concerns if you are in agreement with that. Do you have an issue with allowing that group to go ahead and speak? It's Bishop Pratt. I'm going to go ahead and introduce Bishop Pratt. Bishop, if you'd like to come to the dais, I know that you have some information that you'd like to share with us and some concerns about water and some various things in the neighborhood. So we'll turn that over to you. I think everyone knows Bishop Pratt. And so Bishop, we'll turn the floor over to you to make those requests or presentations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can pass this around, everybody can grab one so that the council can have an idea of what I'm talking about.
Bishop Pratt, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Generally, when someone comes to, we ask for their introduction, which we all know who you are. If you would state your address, that's all we need for the record.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you proceed. Thank you.
Tim Pratt's my name, 3102 Hillcrest Avenue. Actually, you'll note by my address that my home is actually in the county. However, I have a city problem. And the reason I have a city problem is because in the county where I live, we have problems with our water lines. And the problems that we are having is that they are constantly rupturing. They're constantly being patched, month after month. You'll note from the pictures that I've given you, there are several locations that these lines are being patched multiple times a year. And it's getting to the point that it's making our roads look like, and I saw, we're talking about historic preservation and all that stuff, you know, we just want decent-looking roads in the county. And the problem is, the water lines, I'm told, are the property of the city. So it is the city's mandate, if you will, to take care of the water lines. And I want to make you all aware that this seems to be a problem that's kind of getting put on the back burner, because this has been going on for years. When I say years, I'm talking about years. I can't even remember when they first repaved King Drive years ago. Within three, four months, they had to snatch up a chunk of the pavement to fix the water lines under there. And they've been doing it ever since. And as you look at those pictures, every one of those sites, either they got a chunk of pavement out of it, or they've got water on the ground right now. I passed King Drive and MLK right now on my way here. That water's on top of the ground, which means that water line's in disrepair right now. And there's not a crew there that's been working on it. And I know it's been like that for two weeks. You know, so what we, what I want to bring to you all's attention is, these water lines pose, I believe, a health hazard. Not only do they make our roads ugly, not only do they make, almost like we're traveling on speed bumps coming up Wilson Street or any of the other streets, you know, I believe these leaks in the water line over a number of repetitive times, I believe they pose a health hazard. Now, I can't say that with any certainty, but I did do a little bit of research that says when water pressure decreases, the outlined groundwater is sucked into the land. And although that may not necessarily be the case, that might be the case. And for these lines to be in disrepair as often as they are, my question to you is, why is this not important to you? And it can't be important because they've been like this for years. And if it's not important, what do we need to do to make it important? Because these lines need to be, part of the place got new lines, and part of the place has old lines. And my question is, why replace part of the lines? If you're going to replace part of them, why not replace all of them? You know? And what is it going to take to do that? And who knows what could be the potential health hazards that's coming as a result of this? I don't know. But there certainly could be some health hazards coming as a result of this. And as a homeowner in the community, you know, I shouldn't have to buy a house in Tifton West to have good water lines. I ought to have good water lines over here on Kennedy Drive and King Drive and MLK and all those other places. We ought to have good water lines and decent roads without the pavement chucked all up out of them. We ought to be able to have that. And if, even though we're in the county, this is a city issue, city ought to be able to deal with that. There ought not to have to be a public outcry, honestly, for y'all to handle this. This is y'all problem, and I know the city trucks are coming on a regular basis. And I won't name any names, but I just stopped an actual crew. Man, what are y'all doing? Why can't y'all fix this? Y'all are here every couple of months, you're in these same spots. You know, and without going into detail, the idea was, city just hadn't chose to fix it. You know? So here's my question again. Why is this not important?
Well, let me answer that. It is important. It is very important to us. So let me assure you of that. I think everyone around this council and this table and in this room would agree with, every citizen deserves good, clean water. If you're in, you know, if you're on a sewer line, you know, good, everything, everything, completely agree. So what I've done is I've asked, we have Dan Grossell here, who is the president of ESG Corporation, that's our Public Works Division. And they can get into, and Pete Presensky, our city manager, they can get into a lot of the technical aspects that I couldn't, I couldn't even begin to have that conversation and make any sense. But I can assure you, it is very important to this council. So we hear you and we want to respond to you and to answer your questions concerning the concern for the condition of the water, when things will be handled. So Pete and Dan, who, I don't know who wants to address the questions first. I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen, to address the bishop's questions.
And let me just add...
Okay, sure.
Just, and it's sad to say, it's not just in your area.
Right.
Okay. We've got some infrastructure problems throughout. There's some lines that are old. There's no question about that. Both any incorporated areas of Tifton and the unincorporated area, unincorporated where you live. Because you say you live in the county, well, I live in the county too. City of Tifton's county. So that's something to forget that. But, so it's not a case of, well, that's just the only area that, you know, everybody else is just wonderful. Because I have, somebody calls me every few days about, "There's a water leak here and there's a water leak there." So it all boils down to how much money can we spend, you know, to go and replace all of the lines? And so it's a matter of which ones, and these guys, which ones are the worst? And what we've tried to do, because what was happening before this council is, there'd be a water leak, and you go and you cut the road. It didn't matter, the road could just have been paved, and the next week, there's a leak. So go and cut a brand-new paved road. Now, before we repave, they're checking those water lines and either moving them off to the side. So then if you had to, if you want to add to that, hold on, you don't cut the road. Okay, so we had those issues. We've stopped that, you know, that problem. And as we're repaving within the city limits, you know, we're doing that. You know, what would happen when we get outside the city limits and we go to replace a water line? Then it's a matter of what does the county commission do when it comes to, you know, paving that road? We would have to work that out. But that, too, has been a sticking point of repairing these lines and then who paves the road. That's an argument for another day. But just so, you know, we do have other leaking water line. That's not a good thing to say. But after years and years and years of not replacing lines, that's kind of where we've come to. But we've made some headway the last few years, and he's got to tell you, we're on a path to do more, so.
Yes, sir.
Bishop, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and you are 100% correct. The lines on Wilson and Hillcrest need attention. I can tell you, that was programmed in the budget late last year. There were some things slotted, as the councilman said. We had projects, they are lined up to repair. But I'd like to explain to you where we are with this, because ultimately, within two, three months, these two lines are going to be repaired. They're programmed, they're ready to go. And when we start to see complete failure, what you're seeing... And when we start to see complete failure, what this, what you're seeing is our time of an emergency or it's our job to look at the whole system. Because we don't look at city-county, we look at the whole system. We know exactly where the old galvanized pipes are, just like the councilman understand. I, I think everybody understands. We know where they are and we know how they need to be replaced. So we are actively doing that feverishly each and every month. We, we talk about that at meetings. So we are slotted. We're going to push this one actually up because you're right, Wilson is just about failing. So if, if I can, I'm going to ask Dan to come up. We have a map and I just want to go through an explanation quickly so you, you understand what we're doing so the audience can understand a little better where we are and how the system is connected. There's two areas that we're not done, all these pipes. And Bishop is going to explain that. And then I'll ask him to finish up because under, I, I want to make sure you're comfortable that as far as our lines, groundwater and pollutants, I'm going to ask Dan to address that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Dan, if you'll take the program, I'll give it back. Council, maybe you have a map at your, your own station of what, what is there.
Is that, is that where it's going to show up on camera, Jonathan? Where do we need to get so that that, so if anyone's watching this, they can at least see, even if it's just a zoom in and then back to Dan, so that they can see that? Okay, thank you. All right, Dan.
Okay, so you want to address the, the two streets, I think, are very, very important and how we describe this, how we look at it from an engineering perspective and then from a utility perspective as to where we are. Bishop?
All right, thank you, Pete. Mayor, City Council, Bishop. First off, you know, we've got an unusual, I guess, scenario here in fact that a lot of these lines have been replaced with PVC, six inch PVC lines. We're dealing with some legacy issues that was done back in the 50s and the 60s, was pretty late to any of us really, as far as the system itself. Back in the day, the state of the art, the state of the art water line was galvanized. And so a lot of the areas, it's not just a lot of areas right now have these legacy issues where these inch and a half and two inch galvanized up a long time. The bad news is they're failing. And so what we've done is we've identified a lot of these areas around, not just in the city, but in the county that require attention. Yours is on the top of the list and as Mr. Presensky had talked about earlier, it was budgeted last year to be done this year. So that's in process now. The peculiar thing about your neighborhood was they went in and replaced a lot of these lines about three to four years ago. You probably remember that. But I guess at the time, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming they ran out of funding and they missed two lines. Okay, these two lines happen to be right here on Wilson Street. This line in green is a galvanized line. All the other lines you see on here are PVC. This small line right here on Hillcrest is PVC, is galvanized as well. Okay, here's our problem. All these other lines have been fixed. They're, they're, they're fixed. But the problem is that without replacing this little piece and that piece, you can't de-energize or depressurize the galvanized system because there's still about 20 homes on the galvanized system. Everybody else in there, even though a leak may pop up in front of their house, their water system isn't impacted by it because they're on the PVC line. It's the old galvanized line that's buried is the problem. The good news is it's going to be a pretty straightforward fix. And so the city has funded that. So we're in the process of, right now, getting bids on the replacement project. To your health concerns is that EPA and the state of Georgia have some pretty strict guidelines to protect public health. And what it says is that if you're pressured below 20 PSI at any given time, we have to issue a boil water notice to protect public health. That's never happened because what's happening is the part of the line, the service lines are breaking, they're having to go out and clamp them. They're done under pressure. It's never lost pressure in the system, which is good news. That means the water quality is good, so there's no contamination getting into the system. That's the good news. The other good news is we're going to be getting this done this year and replaced. And I apologize for the delay in getting this done.
Bishop, if I, if I could also add, just so you know, on Wilson, obviously, there's going to be a lot of service lines that we have to put from the line, the new water line, to the homes. That's called service.
From the, will we just go from the line to the meter? It's the line that'll be replaced.
Excuse me. So when we do this, we're going to move the new water line as close to the side of the road as we can so we don't disturb any more pavement. That's one of the commitments we're going to do. So when we put in new water lines, if we need to bore underneath, we're going to try not to disturb any more pavement than we already have. I can't answer, again, what we've done, you know, years and years ago, but I could tell you going forward, we're going to heavy, put heavy emphasis on not disturbing the pavement and trying to protect it just, just as much as we can. So what you're seeing now is essentially, on the map, there's two water lines in the ground. An old one and a new one. And what you're seeing, both are what's called energized. That means there's water flowing in both of them. What we're seeing popping, what we call infrastructure, just breaking, is the old galvanized line. So we need to get that out of, we're going to abandon it. There's no, going to be no more water flowing in it. The new liner, new water lines will be put in by the contractor. The service lines will be put to the meter and hopefully we'll not see any more complaints with the water side. We're going to work closely with, with the county again on, on resurfacing and I don't, I don't know what their schedule is for that. But I can tell you, this group and Public Works, from here on out, if we need to replace a line, we're going to program it and we're going to preserve as much of the pavement as we can.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions of the council or Bishop, any other questions or comments, concerns that we can, can maybe answer for you this evening or get information for you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Dan. Thank you.
I'll go on the record. I'll commit to you by, I'm going to say probably three months, three months this will be completed.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get back on our agenda. Now we are under the item of new business. Our first item under new business is our police department is seeking state certification through the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. So we have Chief Dowdy who will present that information to us.
Mayor, council, the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police started a program some in the 1990s called State Certification. And what State Certification is, is a group of people, assessors who will come in and look at your policy manual. They'll make sure it's progressive and meet certain standards. If, they'll help you tweak the current policies, they'll help you write new policies, they'll help you delete policies you no longer knew. And again, it keeps you, keeps you up with progressive practices, a certain set of standards. And then after that, what's really good about it, they come back every so often doing audit. And the audit part of the, the program is what's really good, you know, they make sure you practice what you preach. If you have a policy that says you do something, they come back and ask the documentation to prove that that's the way you do it. We were actually state certified a few years ago and we actually got out of it. We, we plan to start back, I think Mr. Pete has the contract. And the initial cost is only like $375. We will have to pay a fee to have some assessors come in, motel, food and such as that, but it's relatively inexpensive for water supply. And we look forward to starting that process and with your blessing, we will begin so soon as possible.
I, I commend the chief and his leadership staff to take this on today. It is somewhat rigorous, but it gives you the assurance and our citizens the assurance that we are operating at the levels from SOP standpoint with policies and procedures that the way we should be. So hats off to the chief for taking this on and making a go at it. So this is a great program and speaks volume for the department.
Excellent. All right, good job. Thank you, chief. Any questions, gentlemen? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Update. And I'll call on John Shepherd to present that information to us.
Good evening. Excuse me. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the city's participation in the community rating system, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. As you may know, the National Flood Insurance Program provides insurance, flood insurance. And this insurance is required for federally backed loans for properties within the 1% floodplains. Community rating system reduces these flood insurance premiums based on activities performed by the city. And the insurance services office, which works for FEMA to manage this program, has recently completed their five-year review of our activities. And they have provided a verification report, which you should have a copy of. There's a big draft in front of it. I'm going to go through these real quick, just to let you know what we required to do for the certification. The first one is elevation certificates. We were required to keep copies of the elevation certificates on file and provide those to anyone requesting to see them. Map information service. We receive credit for providing flood information to citizens who come to the office and for maintaining firm maps, current and old ones in case somebody wants to have some historical reference there. Outreach programs, we receive credit for sending letters to all the property owners within the floodplain. Currently, there are 978 parcels in the floodplain. And in those, there are 488 structures that would have to be insured. We also receive credit for sending letters to repetitive loss, lost properties. And there's two of those in the city. Hazard disclosure, we receive credit for providing flood information on request for people who are looking at privacy property, if they're doing some background check or something like that. Flood protection information, we receive credit for providing information at the library and sees web site. It's pretty easy to do. Flood protection assistance, we receive credit for being available to meet onsite, to discuss flood issues with anybody that has property in the floodplain, want to know how to protect their property or upgrades. Open space, we receive credit for maintaining open space in the floodplain. This provides space in the floodplain for floodwaters to expand and not being disrupted by structures. Currently, we have documented 82 acres that the city has in the preserve, so pretty good. Higher regulatory standards, we receive credit for our floodplain ordinances, particularly related to freeboard, maintaining or monitoring the substantial improvements to structures in the floodplain, protection of critical facilities and local drainage. Flood data maintenance, we receive credit for our GIS maps that are maintained by the regional commission on our website and through the Q public. We receive credit for stormwater management, which is soil erosion control, water quality. And repetitive loss, for this particular item, we didn't, we don't receive credit for it, we just have to document repetitive loss properties. And that one, I'm looking at trying to get it off our list because it's basically been mitigated with the two large detention ponds we built down off of Old Osilla. So hopefully we can get those taken off and not have to deal with that anymore. Dams, basically we receive credit for the state's dam safety program. And the last one is the county growth adjustment. That just gives you a little extra credit for how much the county is growing their population in relation to the rest of the state. The, the city was able to maintain the class eight rating from the previous certification. And the class eight rating basically reduces the flood insurance premiums by 10, 10% for citizens in Tifftown. Any questions?
How are the insurance, the companies that provide flood insurance, how are they notified about this premium discount?
That is one of the mailings we sent out. We sent out mailings to realtors, the banks and the insurance agents in town.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Mayor, council, I will tell you, John, single-handed revived this program, which is really serious, set forth by the state. And he's been working on this probably for a year. We were a little behind in what we were doing with our maps. And he, he's done a lot of work. So this is very, very important for our residents. If they're in a flood area, what areas are in a flood area? And then this ISO, because if we didn't do the correct action and John didn't deliver that, we would have seen an increase on homeowners. So real important stuff. John really did, did a great job with this program and there's no action required on your part. I just wanted to let you know that he's finished this and stabilized our ISO ratings for, for if you have property in, in the area for a homeowner. So John, I want to thank you for, for doing that.
I'd just like to say Cherry was a lot of help with this.
Cherry Clare, good.
John, I got a couple, I got a question.
Okay.
The classification, what does that range from?
Zero to 10.
Zero to 10?
10 is being the highest where you have no credit. And now I think it is, I think it's 500 points to 1,000. And we're in the 1,001 to 1,500 to be the class eight.
Is there anything that we can implement to make that rating better? Because as a banker, I deal with people who buy properties in the floodplain and insurance is ridiculous.
It's outrageous, yeah.
And if there's a way that we can reduce that any given way, and that's something that we can do as a city, I am all for implementing whatever needs to be done or discussing whatever needs to be done to lower that premium.
Right. My plan is to look through the manual, it's about that big, and see what else we can do. Our problem here is we don't really have flood issues because, you know, we get a big rain, it's pretty much stays into, into floodway. And it's not flooding houses or streets unless there's like localized stoppage somewhere. So it's hard for us to get extra credit for doing some of the items that give us a lot of points, like floodproofing, you don't need to floodproof because nobody's flooding that kind of thing. But my plan is to see, 500 points is a lot to come up with, which we need about 450 to get to the next class. And that's, that's a long way to go with a lot of issues.
It gives you a goal, I mean.
Yes, yes. I'll comment, Trey's here tonight and he, we actually applied for a grant that we're going to be studying the stormwater and how the stormwater moves from north of Aback all the way through Tifton and how it ends up into the drainage canal. So he's studying that for us. We're going to know all the areas that, how deep it is, what size pipes. But you bring a great point because this is our job. If we have developments, big developments, that we could add for the stormwater, hold, retention to save in low areas, or that we look at design that we could store more water for areas that are potential or in the flood zone, that's how we can maybe gain some points. So there's a couple of things that we could look at. But as we continue to see sprawl, I think it's contingent upon us, where are the areas? And from an engineering aspect, is that important that we create another Old Osilla detention or hold area for the flooding areas?
The other thing I would mention is FEMA is recalculating the, or redrawing the flood maps potentially within the next two to three years. We should have new flood maps. And I expect the floodplain to narrow down from what I've seen so far.
Gosh, I hope so. When was the last map run? 2012, was that right?
2010.
2010. Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Good work. We appreciate that very much. And I know our citizens appreciate that too. The next item will come from Jonathan Taylor, a recommendation to purchase server equipment. And Jonathan, I'll turn it over to you to present that information.
All right. So from the IT standpoint, basically every year we look at the number of servers that we have and the equipment and that type of equipment that needs to be refreshed. We try to keep this fairly up to date and with the rate of technology, things are basically outdated within five years, sometimes faster than that. So what this is, I'm actually looking at replacing several pieces of equipment with somewhat of a newer technology that, that's out now. It's been around for about five or six years called hyperconverged. And basically it meshes four or five servers into one. And so all this equipment, instead of having four physical boxes in our server room, it kind of does all this stuff in one. And we'll be able to do that with higher performance, better capacity and some of the things that we really need. And this is basically getting some of that new equipment for five years. We have warranty maintenance on it for five years. The costs are the same that we would pay over the next three years or so. So basically, we need to buy two, two pieces of equipment this year. It's basically a must. If it's not this, it's something else. This replaces those two equipment, pieces of equipment this year, a server for next year and a server for the following year. So within this window, we're just basically replacing all these pieces of equipment at one time.
Consolidating services?
We are. And that's actually what we're doing as well. We're consolidating the physical number of boxes and the pieces of equipment that are in our server room.
Oh, don't look at me, I'm no IT guy.
I thought you were going to come up with some.
No, that's all I got.
That's the same thing I said to him.
All right, any other questions of Jonathan? Okay, and I think we're going to remove item number five, so we won't go into that. All right, thank you, John, appreciate that. All right, Jessica, our wonderful city clerk, is going to review the comprehensive plan goals and the 2019 Short Term Work Program accomplishments. So Jessica, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, I included, in May of this year, our staff reviewed our short-term work program, which we adopted along with the comp plan in 2018. We are a plan-first community, so as for continuing to be that, to meet those- our accomplishments that we have to each year to keep that designation, we have to review our comp plan on an annual basis. Today, I'm just bringing it to you to show you what we have completed within the last year and just go back over those goals that were developed when we developed the comp plan in 2018. I have the list there, it lists each department. And these are the same things you always see in a budget. So this is just looking over a five-year period. And we're pulling out those ones that we completed within that budget year. So from 2018 to 2019, we completed twenty-five of one hundred and fifty-eight projects. I think that's pretty good. And some of those were in progress, but we weren't able to account for them. And then I just included the basic plan goals. And they are, you know, to continue to promote natural and cultural resources and preserve those for future generation, economic development. And that's just continued program, different things that we can do to, you know, promote economic development. Tifton, housing, to encourage access and appropriate affordable housing options for all residents at all income levels. And land use and transportation, just to ensure that our growth is well organized, that we're preparing for the transportation as we grow as a community. The community facilities and services, the same thing, that, you know, when we have growth and economic development in town, there are- these are the- we have goals and then how we're going to get there, you know? When we're looking at, you know, planning for the future, are we also planning for the transportation, the infrastructure to be there to meet the needs of our growing community? So I just wanted to bring that background to you. And the issues, the way the comp plan works, you identify your issues and then you look at your opportunities to how you're going to meet those established goals. So I've included those in there, if y'all want to look at them. And maybe just a good time as we're going into our next year for us to just focus on, you know, some of those things when they come up and moving towards so we can have some accomplishments, for our Plan First review, which is in a couple of years. And then we'll be adopting a new comp plan in the next ten years. And that will be here before you know it. And if y'all wanted to look over that, if y'all had any questions, I'm sure we have staff here that can talk about the projects individually.
Well, we are required to review our comp and have citizen input and that kind of thing. So I think the- I know we're doing this as the Plan First community and honoring that commitment to that. But I do think it's good for us to review this from time to time, not only to see, to remind ourselves, you know, these were the goals that we established as a community, but where have we come and what can we check the box that we've accomplished, if this creates something new that we need to do? And it is good to look back and, you know, you get tired, you get busy just doing the day-to-day work. So to go back and say, well, wow, we really accomplished it, I think that's a good review process for us. So, everyone does have that in their packet. Does anyone have any questions, comments on the work being done and how we're working within our comp plan, comprehensive plan? And Jessica, good job on this. This is- I know it's pulling a lot of information together. And I love that this is broken down by the various departments, because as you can see, every department within the city has something going on, something that we're striving to accomplish, something that we're striving to improve. So that is, I think, very good for our community. And we are just one aspect of that comp plan. It's Tifton County, the city of Tifton, cities of Taita and Omega as well. So how we all interact and work together, I think is very important. All right, any other- any questions, comments for Jessica? Y'all good? Okay, thank you, Jessica, good job. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Community Development Block Grant Fund for Commerce Way. Pete, you want to present that information?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as you know, we have talked about this project a couple of times and had a couple of different versions of the ideas. It started with, just as a recap, two buildings demolition broke down and we went to one building to demolish it. We had a developer wanted to rehab it. So, which in your packet, Bruce and I did talk to the DDA board at the last meeting, going over the last, probably the last final approach as to what we can do with the grant and with the buildings. The three options were to follow through as the DDA, as the contractor. The second was the DDA just to buy the building outright, apply for some different type of grants. And then the third would DDA buy the building, act as the contractor, and turn around and sell it or do something, a variation of the two. So it was decided, and I just wanted to inform you that the DDA is going to take this project on themselves as the developer. So they're going to buy the building, file with the same type of footprint that was set into place, but they're going to rehab the building and probably some type of retail. I'm not sure about the second floor, but the DDA is going to do this. They still want to do the parking lot in the back of the building like we talked about. But what they have communicated to me or us is that we could probably go ahead and return the redevelopment fund grant back to DCA because of the usage and how many stipulations that they set forward to use this. And I think it's a safe way to approach it. And what I mean by that, there was a lot of things that DCA required, which really complicated it to the max. I think that's the easiest way to say it, but I wanted to share with you that we probably need to communicate back to DCA that we will not be using these fund grants for this particular project. And it is two years in the making. So Bruce has talked to DCA about this. Things change over time, and I think this has no impact on us going forward whatsoever in a negative way.
We understand it has no impact on ourself, Tifton project.
Not at all.
Yeah, as Pete said, the DDA had many discussions about this over the last three years. It's been a crazy project. And we decided not to accept the grant because there are a lot of strings tied to it. If apartments were ever put in, there are restrictions on how much could be charged for the apartments and those type of things. We just didn't want to deal with those restrictions. So DDA is going to buy the building and start the rehab.
That's exciting. That's good news. I'm glad to hear that. That's good.
Redoing the rehab out of funds, Carrie Ford?
We're not sure. Either we're going to do it out of our SPOS funds or we've talked to Bruce, there might be some state grants available for us to look at.
Excellent. Yes, Mr. Green?
And if I may, as a footnote, in context of our first presentation tonight, that building was built in 1885 by Dr. Julian. By about 1912, we have proof that it was an African-American hotel. If one goes upstairs in that building right now, that is the most untouched 1885 building still standing in Tifton, Georgia, Varnell. So with the loss of the African-American Masonic Hall, slightly on South Ridge, that now is probably, has moved up to the most important historic building still standing that is tied to the African-American community. So I just shared that with y'all. And the condition upstairs, yes, it means rehab, but architecturally and historically, the fabric is in place exactly as it was in 1885. So it has tremendous historic value.
That's exciting.
Another cool thing is, and DDA was very firm on their commitment to Mistakers and the family. Because when it originated, it started purchasing the property from them. So this has been a long-stake process for them as well. But in exchange for when Bonnie, actually, when she found out about the news, she actually turned over a couple of pictures of the front of that building, the way it was years ago. And it is very detailed. So the DDA has made the commitment to do actually the facade the way it looked eons ago. And I think it'd be just remarkable for the historical piece, but more importantly, a modern architect, that architectural flair that it's going to be commemorating downtown.
Well, the historical significance is obvious, that this building is so visible to people that are riding through Tifton on Highway 82. It's just going to be another- it's going to be a nice complement to what's already going on on Commerce Way. So that's very exciting. So, very glad to hear that. That is good, good news. All right, any other questions, comments regarding that project? All right, thank you. All right, Pete, do you want to talk to us about the annual audit?
There's really nothing to talk. Martin Jenkins did send us their letter for this year's audit and same objectives as last. MDNA, scheduled changes, and what they look at, it's forty-five thousand dollars for the audit services. And we're scheduled to start very soon. So I just, I want to share with you, we're ready to kick this off. And I'm not- I can't remember if we talked about this letter last year, but I want to make sure you had it so you could read it to your leisure. But we are fastly approaching this year's audit. And I'll probably recommend with Dana that we probably bid these services out next year as time allows.
All right. Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Pete. All right, we are under the Resolutions category of our agenda. And Jessica, you want to talk to us about the resolution for the Enterprise Zone Incentives for 12, 13 properties?
This property is located on Eighth Street. It is for- is to rehab a building and it's for an apartment residential area. Based on the guidelines that we approved recently, the staff is recommending based on those guidelines. And I have that on my second page. So he would be in that second tier. The tax abatement would be one hundred percent at three years. Building permit fees, the maximum incentive would be five hundred dollars. And utilities and landfill would both be at one thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions, comments about this?
And the- all the information is behind that. Haven't we brought this before?
We have, yes, yeah.
So the total incentive is forty-three seventy-three.
Okay.
I hope you like the chart, if you can see that. This is the first one, one we adopted. Very clear, so give you incentives. That's where animators get us. So right down to the disposal at the landfill, because that was always a kind of a hiccup. We didn't know where we were, but this is, it's working.
That's exactly what I was thinking I was going to use.
Okay, all right. Any questions about that process? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Good job on that. All right, we are now under Other Business on the agenda. And in our packet that Jessica emailed out to us earlier, at the end of last week, we have a lot of names that have been brought forward for the potential appointment to our various boards that we have open. And you can see that on file. Any discussion or questions that you have about any of these candidates? It's exciting to see this many names. We haven't seen this many names in a long time, so that's really good. I think that's a testament to working diligently to make sure that our citizens know what opportunities are aware. We do have an opening on Keep Tifton Beautiful, on the Tifton Tree Board, and on the Historic Preservation Commission. And you can see the applicants there. So obviously, we won't be voting on any of those this evening. But unless anyone has any questions, we'll move on to the City Manager Report. Anybody have any questions? Everybody good? Okay, all right. All right, Pete, it's up to you now to present your report.
Okay, thank you. If I may, just, I'm going to pass this out as just the first glance of our annual report. And again, this is a draft. I would probably say we're at ninety-five percent. I need all eagle eyes to help. Yes, you help, it's a great help. We are close. My hats off to Chandler and Brandon for taking this and both being new and turning it into our annual report. So again, I'd say we're at ninety-five percent. It is a draft, so I'm not ready to present this. This is for your viewing only, to give you a snapshot. What I'd like to do is get some comments from you, if you have any, if you have questions about something. Again, we have a- some work left to be done, to finish it. We're going to be getting this to the departments, looking it over one more time, making sure our information is correct. We did do a couple of different things, frequently ask questions and taking on a different flair for the annual report, more of the information and how we capture the year in review, looking at statistics, looking at different accomplishments, and then summarizing it with some highlights at the end. But it's a- I'm really excited to unveil this, which I plan to do at the next council meeting. So this will be, this will be ready to print for your unveiling at the next meeting if you do not have any major changes.
Who did the layout and design?
I don't remember who it is.
Layout and design, who did that?
Brandon, I mean, well.
This looks good, looks good. It's a very readable format.
I love the questions, I think that's great. It just, I'm very impressed. So hats off to Brandon and Chandler, y'all, this is awesome.
I know Bruce helped a lot and Abby had a hand in it. Because for all, just it's new information for them, which is very understandable. And the department, sometimes we take for granted that not everybody knows the information and what we're trying to share. So it's not we're being critical, but we want to make sure when we give this out, whomever sees it, if they're from Oklahoma or they're from Nashville, Georgia, they'll be able to look at this to kind of understand what we did in a snapshot. And I think this is, it's a culmination of, again, what we've done and what we stand for in the city of Tifton.
Well, I sort of see us as maybe the Board of Directors and our citizens are shareholders. And so to be able to provide this information to our citizens so that they can see very quickly how money is spent or how different departments are run or different statistics that different departments provide. I just think this is excellent. So I'm very, very impressed. So, but do take this home, read over it, proofread if there's any corrections or anything that we need to, or expand or remove, whatever, just let.
Yeah, items that you maybe thought about. Just please, if you'll let me know, I'd like to have this somewhat finalized by Friday. There's still a lot of work to do when we go into hard copies. And we're going to, again, look for just errors, checking our facts and make sure our figures are correct. So if you see anything, if you'll please let me know, I greatly appreciate it. And we'll unveil it to the public and to you next meeting. Thank you.
All right, excellent.
The next item, I wanted to share with you that we've taken a step in technology and put in some GPS application units in some city vehicles. Police Department, we've done community improvement with the inspectors and code. And we even put them in some fire trucks specifically, not to watch of our employees, but for efficiencies and to actually focus on benchmarks. And this is done through Verizon. So on cellphone applications, this is a, considering what the reports that we get, a very small cost that we could tuck up in the departments. But for the department heads to use this type of information, we're at a much different level now when it talks to real time and what they're looking, information they're looking at. And I actually asked Jonathan and the chief, we have a car that's- that we're going to pull up. And you're going to actually see the police car traveling where they are. And I'll give a forensics, and I'd like the chief to explain this. So if a citizen calls, if a citizen calls and says, or, the citizen calls and says, "You have not, I've been calling and you've not checked my back porch for a vagrant living on the back porch." We could actually pull a report out of them and actually show that a police car rode by the Asa 66 time. So there's a lot of data that we could do on this. And this is, we're just touching the surface on it. All right, Jonathan, you ready to go live?
Yeah.
Chief, you just, and Danny, if you want to come up too about how this would work in. But chief, some of the- in, but chief, some of the information that you could possibly use with this.
Yeah, what we can use this for, if you look on the screen, that's all the units that are in the area that have the GPS unit on it, and you can filter it down as far as one shift, you can filter it down as far as one unit. The, what I like about it is, let's say, Rob, Special Patrol in his office, we can get on there and we can build a sort of geo fence, you can actually draw a parallel ground or whatever, a circle, and say, okay, if a car drives through this area, it's called a geo fence violation. Rob had Special Patrol's office here a month or so ago, and we were able to show him, in three weeks, we had sixty-six units go to his place, you know, after hours. Right now, Steve has geo fencing on all the school zones. Now, we get out, write school zones this early in the year, but he can sit in his office and watch all the school zones at one time, and make sure the units are in these school zones, you know, high vis, high visibility stuff, make sure where they are, he can let the supervisor know, hey, you know, we don't have anybody in front of geo fence. Now, the supervisors also have access to their own shift. Mr. Pete had asked us to prepare a report, but right now, Verizon's having some issues, we weren't able to give you a report, but I can go back as far as thirty days and say, okay, I need to know how many times they've been about Twenty-eighth and Park, let's say, how many units rode through there, and I can go back and track that. But like, the report issue is down right now, he's trying to get it filtered down to just the police department, they can show you what units are on the road, you'll go in there.
That's one particular unit that's actually active right now, I don't know if you can tell by the dots, but that's active right now, I don't know exactly where he's at at the moment, but you can basically highlight it on the top of phone little labels, and you can see active.
Tell about the speed.
Yeah, we can set it up on alert, you can say, okay, we want to be alerted if a, if a unit hits over eighty miles an hour, or fifty, or thirty-five, as far as that goes. We have, when we first got, it's got a couple of complaints, we have officer speeding on King Road, or Parkland Road, we can go back and look up to thirty days, see what units were on that road, we can search and buy a specific unit, and it actually gives you the speed every few seconds of how fast they were going, so we go back and say, is that a unit or a non-resident? It's also tied into the mechanics, if the engine light comes on, Steve gets a notification, engine light's on in unit twenty-six or whatever, they know there's a problem with it. So, I told Pete this morning in the meeting, that this is going to be just like body cameras and in-car cameras, when they first come out, you think Big Brother's watching, you know, you're trying to keep up with them, but then after just a few months, they don't want to leave home without it, they realize what an important tool this is for, for us and the city, and how it protects them, so it's amazing what it's to do, it's actually set up for delivery trucks many, many, many years ago, they finally made it affordable, so we have forty units at the police department, and I think we have fifty-something total there.
Sixty, I think we have, sixty-two units, forty in the police department, we have about ten fire trucks, and then.
But I can click on a car and say, Steve's car has been in his yard for the last three hours and thirty-two minutes, or it's been there for three days and two hours. And I made specifically sure they did not put one on my truck. I don't see the need for that.
You don't?
Any questions?
No, that's great.
So Danny could do the same thing with code and inspectors, because what we don't want is drive all around the city, I mean, we're after productive time.
Let me ask, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. No, I was just asking, how could this help with our insurance premium?
Well, we haven't checked that far into, but, you know, with safety logging and speed, we.
We're working on it, I know specifically from the fire department, that is an issue the fire department's currently working on, to be able to have more real-time information tied in with the nine-one-one system, so that we can see where trucks are in route and things like that. Will help with insurance, that's not available right at this moment, but we are developing that and going to be putting more into that. The fire department is using this to help start tracking some of their vehicle maintenance on the trucks and those things, because they do a lot of that maintenance themselves, to be able to track and record the actual maintenance, when they've done certain things on their vehicles, as well as routes and travels, and this, there's so much in this software that we have to look at, and you'll start giving us utilities for average gas mileage, and a lot of those types of things, so we can better manage the overall fleets to help develop statistics and things.
Both of these guys, if we have something seriously happen, they both could look at their phones and reroute trucks, based off of the location of the units, so you could imagine the capability, so I just, I really want to share with you, we just started this, and Jonathan worked closely with Verizon, but he and Stephen actually installed a lot of the units on the cars themselves, so we just, we just scratched the surface so far, but I wanted to share that with you.
That's great.
Thank you so much, thanks. And Danny, if you'll stay up here, the last thing I wanted to share with you, you know, we're, we really have putting a lot of emphasis on community development and inspections, because of one of the areas that we have problems with the most, of understanding with contractors and inspectors, it is us against them, and I'm trying to get down to the root, I've had great conversations with Jay Short, I've had great conversations with contractors, and we're trying desperately to say, how do we get down to the root, and how can we change perception? So again, we're not going to satisfy everyone, but Danny and John have talked, and I wanted to share this with you, to get your comment, have created a survey for inspectors and code, and what the survey will do is very simple, is to say, hand them a little card, really, Danny's high speed with his, you know, has a, for your phone, you could, you could hit your cellphone and.
How are you today?
Oh, good.
Daniel Wallace, I'm your friendly neighborhood inspector.
Oh, good, Daniel Wallace.
I'm here to make sure that you have a pleasant experience.
Grumpy contractor.
Grumpy contractor. So we're after the grumpy contractors, because that's how we learn, and I, some aren't technically savvy, so we understand that, but we're going to, we could hand them a survey to say, look, just, it's very simple, answer these following questions, and did, what, did we understand what we're talking about, is there anything you could help us with? So we're trying to get down to the root, and I wanted to get your comments on this, and I think it's, it's a movement, but I think it's a commitment to the community, we're trying our best to do right, again, we're, we're, we have the stake to contend with, our ordinances are very clear, but we're trying our best to provide the service with that hometown touch, and, and I just, I wanted to share this with you and get your thoughts on it, because I feel I'm part of it, because we're trying to find a, not a full solution, but at least to address some of the, the comments, what, what each of you hear about inspections and what we're encountering, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good move.
Bless you.
I think anything we can do like this to get feedback from the public is a good idea.
I like that it's short, it won't take people two seconds to fill this out, but it's got a lot of information, so this is good.
Yeah, and it didn't cost a dime, we did it through Survey Monkey, it's free.
It's anonymous, so.
Yeah.
We never know what we're going to get with surveys, but some applications work.
And I read your letter to the editor in Sunday's paper, and I thought that was very well done, hope you do more of those.
I, I do intend to, I like public education, you know, I try to engage everybody that comes in my office, I try to break it down, because the laws are complex, they truly are, so I try to understand it well enough, and be able to break it down, and put it in the layman's terms, and explain why we need those things, so I hope to be able to continue that, absolutely.
We'll report back on what kind of feedback we get on this, I just, I wanted to share with you, I believe in it, and I appreciate Danny in the running with it, so we'll see what we get out of it.
My, I'm just curious about, one of the questions is, do you live or have an office in Tifton County? Would not everyone answer yes to that? I mean.
No, ma'am, we, we deal with a lot of out-of-town and out-of-state contractors.
Oh, I see what you're, okay, I was looking at that as the owner's perspective, never mind, okay, I see what you're saying, okay, that makes sense.
This is, this is for contractors, you know, if anybody can fill out the survey, that is, that right there is some feedback that I need, you know, in order to create a good survey, so, good point.
Yeah, maybe just work on some wording.
Absolutely.
Get it clear.
Okay, this is awesome, this is great, thank you for this.
Absolutely, I hope it works.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Just a couple other things, and I'm done, I wanted to share with you, is the chief still here?
Love it.
Okay, he was, anyway, he, and one of the things I, I wanted the, the chief and the department to do is, is while school was out, to make sure we're training properly with the school system, and as schools is in, I appreciate Chief, he was part of a tabletop exercise just a couple weeks ago, an active shooter, there were sixty-six people involved, the school, EMA, teachers, the police department, a couple other agencies, and what if, if we had this? And Chief, I think we found some, some good things that we need to probably bring to light.
Yes, sir, we, we found some communication issues is what we found, and we'll be having another drill, I'm sure, in the near future. Now, we're going to have training in this month that is specific to law enforcement and our response to active shooter, but I'm sure before the calendar year's out, we'll be getting the school system to do another full-scale event-type training, which will be calling in fire and rescue, fire department, ESG, all the people that are available to us.
Good, thank you, I hate to have to report that to you, but this is, these are the times, and I think our department is going to be plus, our department plus will be the first responders, including the fire department, and us and the schools, we have to be trained and ready to go, so I wanted to tell you that as school starts today, that we're doing all the right things, so I wanted to share that with you. Two more things, FEMA and GMA from Hurricane, thank you, Chief, from Hurricane Michael, I did get confirmation that our reimbursement checks are in the mail, so it's going to be over two-hundred thousand dollars that we actually spent, general fund monies, supporting that, so I'll let you know when the checks come in, but that was great news, I was real excited, and then, lastly, I wanted to thank Casey Marshall, and Casey is part of the ESG crew, he is the supervisor and the foreman that handles a lot of the water leaks, he's the guy that watches over some of the patching, he is the quality control guy, and Casey, thank you for what you do, and it means a lot, not only your experience, but how you serve the community, and I know, under your daily leadership, it's done right, and Bishop, I wanted to tell you, that's the man that I'm counting on, and I can count on, so we're, we're going to do right, but thank you for that, that's all.
Okay, excellent report. All right, gentlemen, we'll go around the table for your comments. Wes, since I inadvertently left you out completely, I'm going to start with, at the last meeting, I'll start with you tonight.
All right, I've got a couple of things, actually, first, we all know, and Pete may have mentioned to it, that school has started back today, I'd like for all the residents of Tifton and Tifton County to please be aware of the buses in the mornings, remember to be alert, and if the lights are flashing, don't be passing.
Did you come up with that?
No, I read this somewhere, and I thought it was cool, so I was going to say.
Yeah.
Oh, was it, okay, oh, well, and nextly, please be with the family and friends of Coach Anthony Bateman, Coach Bateman was a friend of mine, and mentor of mine, and he's a twenty-five year employee, the, the Tifton County School System has done a lot of things for, for folks from, what, nineteen ninety-two, all the way until last Saturday, this past Saturday, so, just, you know, he passed unexpectedly, and would just want to keep his family and friends in our thoughts and prayers.
Absolutely, okay, thank you, Wes. Jack?
I've got a couple of safety issues, then one other, do we have orders about fences around pools? Do we, do we require?
Dan?
Do we require fences around pools? Yes, sir.
Home owners, I think, requires two.
Okay.
You're talking about, like, at a hotel, or an individual residence?
At a home, at a residence, and a pool in the backyard, do they have to have a fence around? Not, not directly around the pool, but around anything in some form or fashion that can be their yard. Okay.
Let me, let me add to that, is there, is it a specific pool, I mean, like, like one that you can go, or does it have to be in-ground?
It is specific to the pool, it's anything that's over twenty-four inches deep, it's required without one that is forty-eight inches tall. Okay. The other issue, and I talked with Dan about it, but I have a, I have a real problem using Roundup to, to kill grass, whether it be the curbs, the, I mean, I just, I don't do it at home, I don't, just do not use those chemicals, some, somewhere along, I, we've got to stop using these things that, from what I've read, are a probable carcinogen, Dan and I might have to disagree, but, you know, you see it on TV and these, these things, and, and we, we just need to lead the way, I think, as a, as a council, as public service, to not continue putting chemicals into the ground, no matter where they go, there's a better way to take care of grass, will it cost a little, a little bit more, possibly, as somebody weed eat versus spraying chemicals on the grass, now, and.
I lost my mind.
I have, I have an issue, I don't like to see them spraying all these highways.
He lost his mind, I'm going to go, I got to go, I got to.
So, I've lost my mind, but I'm going to be safe, you know, but this stuff's, is, is, is turning up in cereal, and this kind of thing, I mean, so, you know, it's, anyway, it's a problem for me, I don't like to see it, and I'm on record as being opposed to ESG using it, and the city funding it. And the last thing is the animal shelter. We have, we, we have an issue with the animal shelter.
Yes, we do.
A serious issue with the animal shelter, you know, as you know, it's, it's, we all pay, it's handled by the county, funded through all of our taxes through the, in the general fund. Now, you know, I go out on a limb, and I get, get in trouble for thinking I'm opposed to the county commission and that kind of thing, but I, I just don't understand their thinking about that, it's, it's turning into a kill center, when you're only open for adoption during time that people are working, you don't really want people to adopt, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, and I just don't understand that, so whether we try to do something different, citywide, you know, just within the city of Tifton, and withdraw from, you know, the, the funding, that where city residents would no longer have their, their taxes fund this, and those of you in the unincorporated areas, I use that terminology versus outside in the county, would then you'd be responsible through a special tax district to fund what they consider an animal shelter, which I think is, is absurd, what they have, so I think we ought to look at, there's, if you're going to be a thriving community, it's, you know, you hear me preach about the library, and I don't like how they don't fund that properly, there's things you need, well, you have, animal shelter's one of them, either that or you just go around shooting the dogs and the cats or whatever, and I don't think we've gotten to that point, so I'd like to explore the possibility of what would it take, is that the direction we want to go, but the county obviously doesn't care about animals and, and, and what's happening within, within the county, or they not cut the hours, I, I mean, it's, there's, they don't go after hours, they no longer go after hours to pick up.
That's correct.
And then the deputy comes, and unless the, I don't know what.
Aggressive.
Unless it's aggressive, well, they just don't do anything about it, okay, I mean, so, anyway, long term, we, we need to look as a city council, do we need to provide something for the residents of the city of Tifton that matches the, the way we, you know, think you ought to treat.
Good points, all right.
There was an issue I was going to mention too, because as of August first, the county cut the hours in half for the animal shelter, it's now open for like, from one to five, or one to six in the afternoons, Monday through Friday, and that's all, and it is, it is a kill shelter, and that's, that's what it is, if it wasn't for a group of volunteers, that shelter wouldn't be doing much of anything.
That's true.
Volunteers are promoting it, so I agree with you, we need to do something to look at that, because it's not operating well right now, so that's, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. Also, the past month, I've had two people stop me and compliment the city on Fullwood Park, saying that they, they love the walking trail, they love the dog park, they love the way the park looks, more people are using the disc golf right now, so just, just want to give compliments to everyone involved in, in keeping the park looking good, it's doing, we're all doing a good job, people are noticing out of the community.
It's a treasure, yeah, that park is a treasure for this community, all right. Well, I will wrap up, kind of tying into Wes's comments about the school, we had the opportunity to attend the Tifton County Convac-. We had the opportunity to attend the Tipton County convocation for the school system, Tipton County School System convocation last week. And I'll tell you what, the excitement in that auditorium, it's the University of Georgia Conference Center. Every single employee of the Tipton County School System was there, as, as well as many community supporters and, and people who work closely with the school system. And I am so extremely proud of what our school system is doing. I think our new school superintendent, Adam Hathaway, is off to a fabulous start. There was just an energy and a synergy in the room that day that was, was really incredible. So it's great to, oh look, we'll have Johnny on the screen. He's here in spirit. But it was great to be a part of that and it's a good partnership and just kind of echoing your words, councilman folk, with regard to, you know, how we take care of the least in our community and, and the youth and the young people and, and, you know, and stray animals and it's just, you know, it says a lot about our character and who we are and our integrity. So, so I was really proud to be a part of that convocation. Dan, we appreciate you being here this evening to, to help answer some questions and appreciate what you do for us with ESG and it's a good partnership there. So that being said, unless anyone else has anything to come before the council. Oh, yes.
Thanks for coming.
Oh.
Looked great.
Excellent. Good, good, that's another good partnership. Oh, yes. Want them to spend lots of money. It looks good, it does look good. There you go, there you go. Okay gentlemen, anything else? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.